On behalf of the League of Women Voters of the East Shore, I welcome all of you to the Guilford Board of Selectmen Candidates Forum. My name is Carol Reimers. I'm a resident of Kellyworth, and I will be the moderator for this forum. The League of Women Voters is a national, state, local, nonpartisan political organization that welcomes all to join us. We are pleased to sponsor candidates events like this one because we believe in empowering the voters and providing voting and candidate information before each election day. The candidates for the Guilford Board of Selectmen are Matthew Hoy, Democrat; Jonathan Trauda, Republican. They're for the first selectman. The other candidates are for the Board of Selectmen. Sandra Ruoff, Democrat; Lou Federici, Democrat; Carlisle Chacon, Republican; Susan Renner, Republican; Charles Paverda, Independent; and Justin Paglino, Green Party. Each candidate will have one minute for an opening statement on their qualifications, followed by questions. And each candidate will have up to one minute to respond to each question. Beforehand, we determined the order of speaking, and we will go in that order for the opening statement and the start of the questions, and after that, we will maintain a rotation. So let's start with the opening statement, and the first to start is Mr. Trauda.
Thank you, Carol, and thank-- oh. Thank you, Carol, and thank you, Elise, for inviting me to the League of Women Voters Forum. For those who don't know my name, my name is John Trauda. I've been a resident of Guilford for 25 years. For 21 of those years, I've been engaged in public service. I've served on the Marina Commission, the Harbor Management Commission, the Zoning Board of Appeals, and 12 years on the Guilford Board of Finance. I'm also the Guilford Republican Town Committee Chairman in town, and I've been a faithful watchdog for Guilford taxpayers and the only elected official with the courage to say no to large budget increases. I'm running for first selectman because I believe Guilford should be a place every resident can call home, because I believe I can deliver more value to more residents by spending tax dollars wisely, because I want to restore diversity of thought to our local government, and because I want to bring a positive vision for Guilford to the table. I believe Guilford can do better.
Thank you. Mr. Hoy?
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. I'm Matt Hoy. I'm a 40-year resident in Guilford. My wife Cheryl and I raise three children here, all receiving the benefits of a great public school education. I graduated from Xavier High School in Wesleyan a long time ago. At Wesleyan, I majored in Government Studies, which is probably an early indication of why I'm sitting at this table. Early on in my life, I was in-- put in leadership positions, elected to student government roles, elected as captain of both my football and baseball teams in high school and college. I started my local activity when I ran for and was elected to the Board of Finance in 1991. I was elected to seven consecutive four-year terms. Over the 26 years I served on that board, I was chair for 24. I believe that I have earned the trust and respect of this community with 34 years of service. I've demonstrated leadership locally, regionally, and statewide as part of the South Central Regional Council of Governments, past chair, and chairman of the Tweedney Haven Airport Board. I look forward to having a full conversation today. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ruoff?
Thank you. Thank you to the League. My name is Sandy Ruoff. My connection to Guilford started on my lucky day, January 31, 1977, when I began a 40-year career at the Guilford Free Library. During that time, as director, I worked with six first selectmen and myriad members of the Board of Finance. I came to learn about and appreciate the inner workings of all the town departments, especially during the management of an $8 million library expansion program. I have served on local boards, including Chamber of Commerce, Women and Family Life Center, Guilford Arts Center, the Guilford Foundation, and currently, I'm a member of the Affordable Housing Commission. I'm also a 30-year member of Rotary. As a resident of Guilford since 1988, I have come to appreciate the friendliness, the openness, and the spirit of volunteerism so evident in our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Paglino?
Thank you to the League of Women Voters. Thank you to the other candidates and the audience. I moved to Guilford with my wife in 2003 into a very inexpensive home on Sierra Hill Road, and we were fortunate to get a foothold in a community with an excellent public education system where we raised two children, our youngest is now junior at Guilford High School. I earned a PhD in virology at Yale and did 10 years of postdoctoral virology. I got a five-year award from the NIH, but when it comes to publisher parish, I kind of perished. And then, thanks to some inherited wealth from my parents passing away, and I think there's a lot of people in Guilford who know something about inherited wealth. I'm not the only one. There are haves and have-nots in Guilford. I became a have through that inheritance, but my sympathies lie with the have-nots and always have. I want to-- so with my time, I ran for Congress a couple of times. Oh, and it's time for me to finish, so I will leave the rest for later.
Thank you. Mr. Haverdah?
Good afternoon, and thank you to the League and for everyone turning out today. I really believe that local elections are the most important, so this is an important opportunity for all of us to get the information out. 50 years ago, I met my wife, Marlene, a lifelong resident of Guilford. We chose to make our home here. She taught second grade. I ran a small business on Route 1 for over 25 years. Simultaneously, I was chairman of the board of our local savings bank and Guilford's rep under Regional Water Authority. During this time, I also have served on six or seven different boards and commissions in Guilford, including Planning and Zoning, in the Wetlands, Economic Development, in which I served as chair, and two charter revision commissions. On the charter revision commissions, I helped implement a number of changes to the way this community is run, including the five members on the Board of Selectmen at this time, which I think opened up our communication for everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Chacon?
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Carlisle Chacon, and I'm the newcomer to this race, and many people in Guilford are meeting me for the very first time. I spent most of my life, my adult life, working in the restaurant industry in many different capacities, working my way up from the bottom and learning every position along the way. 16 years ago, I took a gamble on myself, and I opened my own restaurant, and since then, I've worked tirelessly to build a community staple in the New Haven area where every customer and every employee feels welcomed and prioritized. I am a pragmatic problem solver. I work open-minded and well in groups, collaborating to create processes that better serve people. I am able to balance slim margins to give people the most for the money while managing to keep all my employees and staff well-paid and satisfied. I come here today as an outsider with no political experience, but rather somebody who could just do the job that has experience. I am ready, willing, and able to do this job.
Very nice. Thank you. Ms. Renner?
Thank you. I'm Susan Renner, and I'm seeking reelection to a third term on the Board of Selectmen. My previous elected service consists of two terms on the Board of Education. I'm a third-generation Guilford native and a lifelong resident with four grown kids. I'm a CPA, and I've spent the past 32 years with American Cruise Lines, currently as the treasurer and secretary at our corporate headquarters here in town. In addition to my perspective as an accountant, lifelong resident, and local businessperson, I hope to continue to represent the traditional, moderate Republican point of view in town government. This means that I believe in fiscal responsibility and keeping government size in check, and also in social justice, inclusion, and protecting the environment. Mostly, I respect the Constitution, the rule of law, and our individual and human rights. I believe that our selectmen can and must continue to demonstrate that here in our amazing town of Guilford, government can function effectively with civility and respect to make wise decisions for the town.
Thank you. Mr. Federici?
Hello. Thank you all for being here, and thank you to the League for hosting. I am Lou Federici, and I'm asking for your vote to be reelected to the Guilford Board of Selectmen. After I graduated from Villanova University School of Law, I came to work in New Haven as a judicial law clerk. I'm a partner at the firm, Pret Porto, in Hampden, and I've also taught for two years at Quinnipiac University as an adjunct professor on labor and employment law. Carrie and I moved to Guilford in 1992. Our children, Christopher, Robert, and Allison, all graduated from the Guilford Public Schools and all live nearby. I have always tried to do my part to be involved in the community. I've served on numerous boards and organizations, and at the moment, I'm a member of the Guilford Rotary and the Hampden Chamber of Commerce. Carrie and I are both active at the First Congregational Church as well. I've served on the Guilford Zoning Board of Appeals, the Guilford Board of Finance, and now I'm completing my second term as a Board of Selectmen. I want to do everything I can to make Guilford the best possible town, and that's why I'm running for the Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now we'll go into the questions section of the forum. So the first question, and we start with Mr. Trauda as the answer. If elected, what is your top priority to accomplish?
I think my top priority would be to restore some balance in the town in terms of the diversity of thought on boards and commissions. For many years now, we've been living in an unbalanced town because the minority rules have been circumvented. And the problem is, is that if we had a third party that was actually in opposition to the Democratic Party, we wouldn't have a problem with our minority rules. But today, we really do. If you could look on the independent site, they have decided to team up with the Democrats, and this is a problem because then there's no diversity of thought on these boards and there's no dissent. On their own site, they said three unaffiliated candidates stepped up to run for the BOE on the independent or line C of the ballot. They combined with the two Democrats to create a fusion slate called Protect Guilford Schools. This happened in 2021, and it's still going on. On Election Day, voters turned out a tremendous number for the municipal election, and they are bragging about a margin of 2 to 1 win for the Guilford Independent Party. But you've got to ask yourself, how does a party of 300 win all these seats without help from another party? And oddly enough, the margin was about 2 to 1, which is about the margin for our registered Democrats versus our registered Republicans. This balance needs to be restored.
Thank you very much.
Do we need this? Do we need this? You do? I'm not sure that Guilford is in a position where we have to be concerned about the political divisiveness that is so prevalent in our country. We, as a Board of Selectmen, have been together for eight years, and in those eight years, there have been less than a dozen votes that weren't unanimous, maintaining that sense of collaboration, cooperation, compromise as we go through our job of providing services and in a responsible, financially reasonable manner. Really, the most important thing that we have to worry about at this point is managing growth. We are in a stage where we have not been for quite some time. The projects that are on the board approved by Planning and Zoning are going to have an impact in our community. That will be my number-one priority. One A, affordable housing and the development of same.
Thank you. Ms. Ruoff?
I'm going to carry on about the affordable housing issue. I've been serving on an Affordable Housing Committee, which has become a commission a year ago. It is made up of 11 members of every party and no party, and we, I think, are making some strides. Guilford has a 2% plus percent of affordable housing. We're striving to get to 10, and we have several projects in the works, of which I'm very proud of the commission and of the selectmen. We want to get some housing at price points for everyone to allow young, old, and all-in-between to be able to move to a different location in town or move into town and be able to afford it. Thank you.
Mr. Paglino?
Thank you. I think my top priority would be wanting to make sure that Guilford stays an affordable place for everyone who wants to call it home. As I said, when we first moved here, we were on just the salary of a medical resident and a guidance counselor, and we were able to move into this town thanks to affordability, and we were able to become homeowners, not just renters. And I've lived here now since 2003, and I think I've seen the mill rate go up every single year, and I know that at some point, it has to reach an equilibrium because that can't go on indefinitely. At some point, you have to rely on the increasing value of homes, which should go up with inflation to maintain your revenue. The mill rate is something that's a percentage. If it went up indefinitely, it would eventually reach 100%. So we're not in danger of that anytime soon, but we have to be conscientious of people who are struggling to make ends meet in town, and that'd be my top priority, make sure we're doing everything we can to make sure that they're getting by.
Thank you. Mr. Haverdah?
First, I would like to address the issue of my independence and/or party's independence in this town. As I stated, I have been appointed to six different boards and commissions by both Republicans and Democrats. I have served under a Republican administration and a Democratic administration. I take my independent thought very seriously, and to say that we are operating without that is just not accurate or unfair. Probably my most concerning issue going forward is affordability here in town. Our taxes are about-- our tax rate is a balance between our grand list and the needs of the community, and that's the balance we have to deal with going forward. Within a couple of months, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance will start addressing the next budget cycle, and grand list was a big issue last year because it was effectively flat. We have a lot of things on the books that will change that grand list, but we have to be careful how they affect our way of life here in town.
Thank you. Mr. Chacon?
I'm going to second what Mr. Trauda said. I think that our top priority should be to make sure that everybody's voice in this town gets a chance to be heard. These boards do-- these votes do come up, and they are voted unanimously because these boards and commissions are all created with one voice, one type of voice, and one type of people. We have to expand who we're listening to because we all have to live here together. We are all in this town together. There is no Republican, Democrat, or Independent. There's just a Guilford party, and we should start to respect each other and respect each other's ideas. I'm not an ideologue. I won't get up there and start to believe that my way of life should be your way of life, but there has to be a way that we can collaborate so that one-third of this town does not feel like they're left out and unheard. And that's pretty much where I'm standing. I think that is a major, major priority.
Thank you. Ms. Renner?
My priority would be to make sure that Guilford retains its character as an excellent place to live with history, natural beauty, open space, recreational opportunities, even as we grow. We don't need to be afraid of change. We were so afraid of the rock pile, and it's fine. We were so afraid of the addiction treatment clinic, and it's fine. As long as we continue to listen and to come together as a community, I think that we can manage all the changes that are coming.
Thank you. Mr. Federici?
Thank you, everyone. I suppose it's no surprise to suggest that affordability is a central issue, and that means a lot to everyone. And it's not simply are the taxes at one number or a different number. It's what value are we getting for those taxes every year? What is the projection we have for the next five years, 10 years? Have we maintained a strong financial footing so that when we need to borrow money for necessary projects, it's available at a reasonable rate? Do we get services that everyone requires? Is our public safety properly funded? Is our education system properly funded? Affordability is not one-dimensional. It's multi-dimensional, and all those things are necessary in order to make something affordable but also valuable. And that's what I see as our priority, to maintain the slow, steady, forward progress that we've been able to do. Thank you.
Thank you. So our next question fits right in with what you've all been talking about, and I think I'll sort of rephrase it. It was to describe Guilford's current level of affordability, but maybe you might want to add to something that you maybe already said about Guilford and affordability. Mr. Hoy, you first.
I think the primary issue with affordability is housing, and will continue to be for some time. There's no easy answer, no easy bullet, but this administration has taken its strides to make sure we make progress toward making affordable housing available here. We first opted in for accessory dwelling units as a right on people's property. We passed an economic development incentive package, which included affordable housing development, which made it easier for developers to come in and reduce their tax burden over the first five years. When we rewrote the zoning code, we included inclusionary housing provision, which means any developments over five units will require at least one affordable housing unit. We also passed an affordable housing home ownership tax abatement program. If anybody's seen the development on State Street, I believe seven of those nine residents are receiving a tax abatement, making it affordable for them to live and raise their families in Guilford.
Thank you. Ms. Ruoff?
Well, I thought talking about housing was going to be my thing, but I will just move over to talking about climate change and climate resilience matters. The town department heads and Board of Selectmen spend a lot of time thinking about this and getting grants to change the level of roads for flooding and all kinds of ways that we can protect the town as we have to face issues like flooding or high winds or anything else that comes along. So I just wanted to mention that. And one of the things that we've been very aggressive about, and I really applaud my colleague here, we have been very successful in getting grants to help us with this process. Thank you.
Mr. Paglino?
I'll say a couple of things. One example I like to look at is, you know, what are the means we could provide property tax relief to those who are in need, and how would we go about identifying those? It's a bit of a challenge, I know, because we don't have access to people's income information as a municipality. One idea related is for people that shop locally, and this is an idea that's been used in Marlboro, New Jersey, if you shop at a locally owned business, you get credit towards your property tax, and this encourages local shopping, which keeps the money in the community. Generally, I believe in progressive taxation. If I could do anything I wanted, I would have a progressive mill rate. I believe in progressive income taxes. For most of the 20th century, the top marginal tax rate was over 90% on taxes above a certain amount. There are the haves and the have-nots, and the situation worsens itself if nothing's done about it.
Thank you, Mr. Haverdah.
Like I stated earlier, affordability, to Matt's point, based on our housing, is a balance between the grand list and the needs of the community. The grand list is not only affected by residences, it's affected by commercial real estate also. I chaired EDC. We had many of the same questions we're dealing with today. You know, what fits? What doesn't fit? Where should it be? A limited amount of property that, you know, can have some non-residential use. These are ongoing questions that get dealt with at planning and zoning level as a right situations, but it does require ongoing vigilance. Lou summed up a point that I'd always like to make about Guilford is not only, you know, you have to look at affordability, but what you get for your dollar. We have a very, very highly valued community, whether it be senior programs, education, list all of the departments. What we get for our dollar is very good, I think.
Thank you. Mr. Chacon?
Folks, I'm a businessman, and I like to see local businesses grow. I think that places like Bishop's and places like Page's Hardware, those are the keys to the charm of this community, and we need to help these businesses thrive, and we need to help people get off the ground to get businesses started. Because the more businesses that we can attract, the more it takes the tax burden off of the property tax owners, and it diversifies where we can collect our tax money from. So we need to do a better job there, and to attack affordability, we need to stop some of the wasteful spending on things like studies and open land. Those things are great to have, but we don't need to do it every single year. Sometimes, when the economy is being hit hard and inflation is high, maybe this is the year to take a break from that stuff.
Thank you. Ms. Renner?
Affordability was by far the number-one issue that I heard as going through this campaigning process, often said in the same sentence as Guilford's quality of Guilford services, quality of Guilford's facilities. It's very hard to balance everything. Affordability in the context of taxes, as we've mentioned, is a function of a lot of things: the grand list, the decrease in other revenue sources, especially intergovernmental sources, and of course, our own property taxes. So over the eight years that we've been in office, the taxes have funded a larger and larger percentage of our budget, up to almost 94% now compared to about 82% when we took over. Unfortunately, being a residential coastal community in New England where the system by state law is property taxes, which, as Mr. Paglino mentioned, are regressive, we're a little bit stuck with the system. I don't mean to say we can't do anything about it, but during the budget process, when we scrutinize all these things that have been mentioned for days in a very transparent fashion, we do our best to get the budget to the lowest possible level. It's hard, but it's hard to move the needle from there.
Thank you. Mr. Federici?
Thank you. People vote with their feet, and in Guilford, housing is at a premium. People move here. When houses become available, there are multiple people interested in getting that, and one consequence of that is, is that the housing stock over time gets more expensive. I think it's critical that we have a range of available housing. There needs to be more apartments. There needs to be more and smaller housing for people to move in, the proverbial starter house, which is a wonderful thing. These are hard problems. There's zoning issues. There's financing issues. There's community concerns. The problem that's going to get solved 10 years from now starts now, and not addressing it will impact affordability in this community indefinitely unless we start and continue to work toward that. I also consider open space as part of that. Every parcel is unique, and missing an opportunity because of temporary financial circumstances, in my opinion, is not wise. Thank you.
Mr. Trauda?
I think the first step in Guilford is really just to stop having taxes be so high. I don't know how many residents would actually realize that in the last eight budget cycles, we've had a surplus, and in seven of those cycles, the surplus has been more than $1 million. And in three of those cycles, the surplus was bigger than the tax increase, which makes you wonder if the tax increase was even really necessary. And then I think it's important that we stop wasting taxpayer dollars. I think that two projects that the town embarked upon where we bought two houses, the due diligence was not done to realize that the houses were historic, and those houses cannot be used for their intended purposes. That's about $750,000. Now, if we talk about open space, open space seems like a wonderful thing. Everybody loves the idea of open space. However, what if I told you we were saturated with open space? ChatGPT thinks we have 53% open space, and the chairman of the Guilford Land Trust thinks it's at least 25. Do we need to buy open space? Is that really the priority, or could those dollars be used better?
Thank you. Next question. What four-year goals do you have for Guilford? And Ms. Ruoff, you first.
Well, they're not necessarily new goals. I think everyone here, no matter what political persuasion they represent, cares about keeping our taxes fair and getting value for the taxes that we pay, so I believe that is a number-one goal. I also-- my second goal is, we put a lot of money into the school budget, which I totally support, but I'm very proud that in the last three or four years, we've been able to take some money and improve all of our parks and keep our seniors' meals at a low price, improve our roads, and just kind of expand the quality of life for people, whether they have children in school or not. And I'm very happy that we're able to spread the tax-- I know I'm very happy that we're able to spread the tax dollars for, for all the people here. Okay, I think I only got through two goals in one minute. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Pegliano?
Yeah, goals for, to see in four years. I really, as a Green Party member and living in a coastal community, do think a lot about global climate change, and we must act locally to, to stave off the worst consequences. Greenhouse gas emissions keep increasing every year globally, and so we're moving in the wrong direction. You'll notice I'm not going to open my water bottle because it's actually very bad for the environment. They have to be trucked and shipped across large distances. So I'd like to see more charging stations in town. I'd like to see a climate action plan, a green business model. I'd like to see the town helping educate the general public and businesses, how they can do a better job to be environmentally friendly, to maximize the impact of our recycling capacity, and to do business in a clean and sustainable manner.
Thank you. Mr. Haberda?
My goal at all times, including the next four years, is to continue to make the best progressive and positive decisions for all of Guilford. Running a town is no one issue. Every issue that's going to be brought up today is as important as the next, but it's each and every one, and the small decisions to get there. We are shortly going to enter into the budget season, and that is probably one of the biggest jobs that we face. It takes a number of months. We listen to all of the departments, their needs, their wishes, their desires, and we have to call some shots. It's as simple as that. And I think the most important thing the Board of Selectmen can do in any community or whoever is the legislative leader is to make sure that the day-to-day operation of all the departments in our community is well thought out for today and for the future, and that each one of our citizens can wake up to a safe, sound, progressive community.
Thank you. Mr. Chikone?
I would say a four-year goal of mine, to go back, is to balance the boards so that everybody in this town can be heard. It's super important for accountability. It's super important for transparency. Overall, that's just, it's important. There's nothing else I can say about that. But as families are the charm to this town and so great for this town, we cannot forget about the seniors in the town. And I would like to find a way to help seniors stay in their homes. I have suggested that maybe we should figure out a way that we can make these in-law apartments so these houses can easier become multi-generational, so that maybe the kids or somebody can come and live with the seniors, so they can stay in their homes. And there has to be a better solution, because these are valued members of our society. They come with lots of years and wisdom, and we shouldn't just make it so they have to leave the town because they can't afford the taxes. There has to be a better solution to that.
Thank you.
All right, so now we're repeating each other. But my goal for the next four years would be to continue to keep our budget increases below inflation as they've been for the past eight-year period, and to have a town with a variety of population, variety of ages, lifestyles, economic points, so that we remain a vibrant community. I hope that, and for the government to continue to function with transparency to meet every issue that comes down the road. We don't know what the next four years are going to bring, but as long as we keep looking at each issue with an open-minded attitude and doing the homework, understanding the facts, making the decisions as they come before the board, I think we'll keep ourselves on track.
Mr. Verdiachi?
Thank you. So perhaps not surprisingly, I think it's extremely important to manage taxes. Everyone takes that responsibility seriously. The budget for next year, that process has begun. The Board of Education is holding meetings already, and I would point out that those meetings are open to all. Anyone who has a constructive comment or an idea how to save money or make the process better is welcome to be heard, and I encourage anyone who has a good idea to do that. Likewise, the town will have multiple meetings involving every aspect of the budget in minute detail. The First Selectmen's Office is open to anyone who has thoughts or feels that they have a problem with the current budget or what a future budget should look like. No one should ever say they do not have an opportunity to be heard because it's simply not accurate. I think public safety in our town is critical. We have a wonderful police department and a fire department. We support them, and I think it's important to continue to do so. And my last point is pedestrian access. It's a long and slow process. It's important, and actually, in its own way, contributes to affordability. Sorry, I went over.
Mr. Tronner?
And sorry, Lou. I think that the vision I have for Guilford is a vision that's positive because I feel like all residents can get behind it. I think the school is really the centerpiece of our town, and it's probably the most important piece of our community. I would like to see at least a study or an exploration of the possibility of reducing from seven schools to four by modernizing and expanding and delivering three schools that are absolutely state-of-the-art and the envy of the rest of Connecticut. This is a project that's sort of long overdue. I've been involved in town government for 20 years, multiple superintendents, multiple people on the Board of Education have said that this is a huge cost of our school system, that we operate so many buildings. There's also another very big project coming down the road to move our public works that's estimated to cost $30 million. I'd like to at least explore the option of the safety zone property as an alternative, which is listed for about $14 million, which could possibly accommodate multiple departments.
Thank you. Mr. Hoyt?
Thank you. Affordable housing, number one. Number two, responsible budgeting, like we've heard here, continuing a trend over the last eight years where the average increase without the reval here was 2.15% tax increase, as opposed to the previous eight years where it was 3.02. So we've made an impact, and we're going to continue to do that. Sustainability is the next item that's key to us taking a look at. We are already well into it. We have a sustainability task force. We put, passed a plastic bag ban. We created a food waste diversion project. We've worked with the state on a Route 146 study because of sea level rise. And lastly, we're working, I mean, not lastly, but we're working on a groundwater study in the greater downtown area because we are having septic challenges with our property owners, our business owners. To your question on safety zone, town already went, looked at it. Unfortunately, that is in the town's aquifer, and putting a public works facility would not go there based on an ordinance that was passed, I believe, in the 70s.
Thank you. Our last question. How would you improve civic participation? Mr. Pegliano?
Thank you, yes. One of the four key pillars of Green Party is grassroots democracy. One of the, we strongly believe in something called proportional representation, so that if you are a minority within a certain district or town, that you should be proportionally represented. The best reform that labels this is something called ranked choice voting, which can be done for single-member districts or for multi-member districts. I'd like to see ranked choice voting. What it is, is you rank your choices of candidate first, second, and third. If your first choice doesn't come in as, is eliminated, then your vote goes to your second choice. It eliminates the so-called spoiler effect and the splitting of vote effect. It's something they use in Maine, it's something they use in Alaska, it's something they've used in Australia for 100 years. It's something that, that we should be using here in Connecticut to diversify the number of political parties that we get to hear from and diversify the viewpoints that we get to hear.
Thank you. Mr. Haberda?
I also would support ranked choice voting. I've had my difficulties wrapping my head around it, but it does make sense for representation purposes. I thought it was interesting, some of the comments about representation here in town, and here I am as that odd person out, I guess. But it is important to note that we have operated for the past number of years with three parties representative on the Board of Selectmen, three parties representative on the Board of Finance. So, you know, I believe that that's an important part. Our party exists, you know, so that those people that chose to be unaffiliated have a place that they can feel welcome. The other part of participation, I think probably is summed up in why I became an independent, it just opens to participation. As far as appointments on boards and commissions, you know, they are not all unanimous. They are, you know, questioned and discussed at each Board of Selectmen meeting, so.
Thank you. Mr. Chikone?
To expand civic participation, sometimes it takes going to the people and not waiting for the people to come to you. So as a lot of people do realize that this position does pay like a tiny little stipend, and I mean, I'm sure that we all could probably figure out something to do that's a little bit more lucrative with our time, but I do pledge to spend, and actually, the meetings are only twice a month, the first and third Mondays, but my pledge is to spend every single Monday working. And if the people won't come to me to talk, I will go business to business, and I will talk to people, and I will go to the schools, and I will find people to talk to and the teachers to talk to, and I will try to get them involved. Because you can't just sit here and wait. Sometimes you have to get out there and get at it.
Thank you. Ms. Renner?
I don't really think of civic engagement as being a problem here in Guilford. I think one of our assets is that we have very engaged citizenry. We have 50 people sitting in this room on a beautiful Sunday afternoon, and our commissions and boards are as full as they've been in decades. So I don't really see that as an issue, but if we're talking specifically about voting, then yes, the voter turnout for a budget is dismal, and that's the opportunity, it's amazing to me, it's the opportunity that people have to participate in the decision that affects them on a day-to-day basis. It's baffling to me. And I hear people saying things like, but why doesn't the town tell us when there's a budget vote? And of course, the voice in my head says, well, it's in the charter, and it's the same every single year, so people kind of have to meet you halfway. But our world has changed, and there are ways that we can maybe do better to bring people in. We can use our telephone system that we use for other reasons as a, as a voting reminder. We could do something along the lines of a weekly newsletter.
Thank you. Mr. Verdiachi?
Thank you. I think civic participation is multi-layered, that it does involve people's interaction with their government. Each of the boards and commission, they have public forum, people should feel free to contribute to that, but it's more than just that. It's involvement in all the activities that go on in town, and the more people interact, and I think that's why people really feel the way they do about Guilford in such a positive way. You talk to someone, and we had an opportunity to meet with some newcomers recently, that are literally the newcomers club, and almost each of them said they, you walk across the green, you walk through this community, you are greeted in a positive way, you get a hello, a good morning, what's your name? And it's just a wonderful thing, and that's part of what makes this community as great as it is. I think in terms of civic government participation, the interchange and exchange of ideas is what's critical. What's important is to be separating out personal political animosities and focus on ideas. That's my thought.
Thank you. Mr. Tronner?
I think civic participation for our party is only going to improve if the minority rules are no longer circumvented. Here's another chart that shows the percentage that the Republicans have of registered voters, which is this bar here, at about 35%. And then it shows how much the percentage is registered voters for the Guilford Independent Party, which is about 3%. But then if you look at how the boards and commissions have been filled, the Guilford Independent Party has about almost 40%, I'm sorry, 36% of seats on boards and commissions, and now the Republican Party only has about 11%. This is obviously out of balance. It's got to change. I'm aware of multiple times where we put up candidates and they were tabled until a Guilford Independent Party applied, and then they were, of course, appointed. Really, to have some balance in this town and some diversity of thought, the minority rules have to be circumvented, I mean, have to stop being circumvented. If you are in complete agreement with our Democratic Party, please run with the Democratic Party.
Thank you, Mr. Hoyt.
Thank you. We'll address the civic engagement part first, and then we'll talk about the minority party representation, which is largely based on the quality of candidates that are put forward to the board for their consideration, as well as the number that are put forward. Nonetheless, civic engagement as it relates to voting is a challenge that every community in this state faces. That is one of the topics of conversation with my colleagues, the other chief elected officials. Nobody can figure out how to get more people to show up, and they're starting to use more and more tools, social media tools, et cetera, to try to engage folks. There are a lot of communities in the state that don't get an opportunity to vote on their budget. We are one of the lucky communities where you have the opportunity to make that vote. Back to the minority party thing. Sometimes people need to look in the mirror to figure out why things are the way they are today. That'll end it there.
Ms. Renner?
Thank you. I agree that with Sue Renner, that it is frustrating when we see the number of people that come out for the budget vote. We have a higher percentage of people for other elections, but I don't really know that I have the answer except trying to do the best we can with publicity, and I think we have improved on that. I also believe that the representation on boards, there's a bare majority, and there's been a couple of commissions where we have been begging other, the other parties in town and spoken directly with the chair of the, some of the nominating committees to fill vacancies that need to be represented by people other than Democrats. So we really do try to do that, particularly at public forums in the Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we now reached the place where we'll have closing statements. I want to invite you to feel free to address any issues that you didn't feel we covered in your two-minute closing, and we'll begin with Mr. Tronner.
Why, thank you. Every election cycle, our voters have the opportunity to vote for a candidate that truly advocates for their interests. Not the interests of government workers, administrators, unions, or NGOs, but your interests. I am that candidate. I will always consider the interests of the residents and the taxpayers first, and my priorities are with students, parents, and teachers, not administrators. I bring to the table a philosophy of government that's simple but so critical. Government should stay out of your affairs and out of your pocket to the greatest extent possible. As your first selectman, I will relentlessly work to make our town government operate more efficiently and reduce regulations. I'll choose priorities that bring the community together and improve the infrastructure and financial footing of our town. I will utilize a cost-benefit approach when considering every budget item and only pursue spending that provides real and measurable value to residents. I'm not running on the Board of Education, but I believe the school is the heart of our community, and as your first selectman, I will pursue school infrastructure that is efficient and provides modern state-of-the-art facilities. I will encourage the BOE to return to the focus of our schools to traditional education with the goal of making Guilford a top-10 school. If you'd like to learn more about our local issues and how I plan to address them, please visit our website, www.gilfordrtc.org. Please consider voting trot for First Selectmen on November 4th. Together, we can make Guilford better.
Thank you. Mr. Hoyt?
Thank you. Given the breadth of my experience and time that I've dedicated to this community, almost my entire adult life, not quite, but three-quarters of my adult life has been in service to this community, I ask that you send me back, because there's more work to be done, but more importantly, I love this job, and I think most people can see that with their interactions with me throughout, throughout, throughout the community. Guilford is a community that we're all proud to call home, and everything we do is about protecting and strengthening it. When the world's challenges reach our door, whether it was COVID, climate change, or rising costs, we've taken them on together with steady leadership and clear vision. At the same time, we've kept our focus on everyday things that make life better here, acquiring more community spaces, including open space, creating a human rights commission, helping seniors with shopping services during COVID, and giving Guilford students new opportunities through an internship, internship program at Town Hall, all while being mindful of the tax burden that we are imposing on our residents. We've done it the Guilford way, working across differences with nearly every Board of Selectmen, vote being unanimous over the past eight years. Our finances are strong and stable with a triple-A bond rating. We've secured millions in outside grants to maintain our infrastructure, support small businesses, and invest in housing while protecting taxpayers from having to absorb those costs on necessary infrastructure projects. Our history has always been one of resilience and pride, and that spirit will guide us as we face the challenges ahead. Making Guilford more affordable on our terms, prepared for whatever Washington prepared for whatever Washington throws our way, and united against the toxicity of today's politics. Together, we can build on our proud history to shape a stronger future for everyone that calls Guilford home. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rock?
Thank you. I look forward to collegially working on all the projects with the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance and all the other boards. I truly will continue to address the fiscal concerns of our constituents and incorporate those concerns in all our policymaking. I enjoy meeting, listening, and learning from all of our citizens. And people say to me, oh, you're a politician. I am proud to say, yes. I look forward to the next four years with hope, gratitude, and optimism. Vote for me.
That's all about.
Thank you. I'll just reiterate, affordability is my top priority. You know, I want to see a town like the one I moved into 22 years ago, where the mill rate is not increasing every single year, so that we can have, reach an equilibrium that is sustainable. Similarly, on ecological issues, we need to keep sustainability in mind. We need to do a better job educating our, empowering our businesses. Some of you may have traveled out of state and noticed that, you know, the rest stops have, or the businesses have more recycling, have more, you know, materials made in sustainable methods. A lot of that seems to be lacking in Connecticut. I'm going to throw in that, you know, in terms of having a representative democracy, in addition to ranked choice voting, we might consider a representative town meeting system where one of your neighbors in your district, we could divide the town into districts, would be a person who is a part of the legislative body of the town, and would run into them at the grocery store, for example, and say, hey, what are we going to do about this? What are we going to do about that? That might be one way of increasing civic participation. Guilford has a lot going for it, a lot of cultural vibrancy. I'd like to see that continue and improve on it. You know, there are some towns that have Thursdays. This is good for businesses as well. Or, you know, it could be second two-sets, could be whatever you want. But you have a street fair where people, businesses come out and organizations come out and get to the table and talk about what they're doing. Yeah, I, again, if anyone's interested in what we're doing at the Green Party as a movement for people, planet, and peace over profit, we're non-corporate, grassroots, democracy party. You can reach me, Justin, at justinfroall.org with the numeral four. John Adams said that his greatest fear would be the division of the Republican to two great parties. And so ranked choice voting is the solution to this, a two-party system that's not representative.
Thank you. Mr. Huberta?
Yes. I've invested a lot of time and effort to help our community thrive. I probably, you know, participated in many positive and progressive decisions. And that's the point I'd like to drive home, that, you know, it is not a one-day-a-week job. It is, you know, your phone number and your email and your conversations on the street happen on a daily basis. Your decisions are made based on information that you receive throughout the week, throughout the community. We've touched on so many of the issues that are going to be coming up in the next four years and ongoing. It's not just the four years, it's a four-year term. But that's not what a community, a community lasts much longer than that. Part of our budget planning is not a four-year cycle, it's a five-year cycle. We ask each department to look at what's going on now, what they see in the future, both for their capital needs, their personnel needs, in order to run their department. We have had, every single major department in this town has a new department head since I've been on the Board of Selectmen. I think each one has improved. Each one was a great department before. I remember my first election, in the first year, we had three major storms. This community came together and thrived. We made it through it. We made it through COVID. You know, there were a lot of decisions that were real struggles. You didn't know until you got into it a little bit of exactly what happened. And I remember walking throughout neighborhoods during those storms, not being able to get back to my own house. Anyway, that's the point I'd like to make about the next four years. We've touched on a lot of them, housing, sustainability, the buildings for our school system. Those are town responsibility. You know, I don't know about reducing it to four, but we are going to have to be looking at what's going on with our school buildings. The other point about changes in the government, I know that Matt is developing a list for charter revision, and that probably will be coming up in the near future, where we take a look at overall how Guilford is operated.
Thank you. Mr. Chakram?
Folks, most of the people on this stage are the same exact people that have been running this government in this town for the past eight years. So we have a choice this November, and it should be an easy one. If you think that this town is running properly, and that we're headed in the right direction, and spending is under control, and your voices are being heard, then maybe I'm not the guy to vote for. But if you think spending has been wasteful and accountability is needed, then change is what you need. And if you're tired of the go-along, to-get-along politics that has plagued this town for the past decade, then a new voice is what you need. And if you think it's time to give someone of a new generation a seat at the table to speak up for young families in this town, then the choice is easy. I'm your guy. The reality is that come November, many of these same members will return to their seats and the board. But we have a chance in November to send them back with someone new, someone with a new voice that is not afraid to speak up and that will hold people accountable, someone with a new and younger perspective. I may not have the experience that some of these other candidates have, but I know I can do this job because I want to do this job. And not just for my family, for your family. So let me leave you with this. It's that a single degree of change today can change your destination tomorrow. Thank you, and God bless Guilford.
Thank you. Ms. Renner?
Thank you. In preparing for today's forum, I decided to review the video from this event eight years ago. And several things stood out to me. First of all, guys, we looked fabulous. More seriously, we sat here in 2017 like a bunch of sitting ducks oblivious to what was going to come. We did not anticipate a global pandemic. We not only survived those crisis years, but your local government developed new and better ways of meeting and communicating with the public, supporting mental health for our kids, and improving outdoor spaces and recreational opportunities. We discussed affordability eight years ago, without knowing about the economic and inflationary roller coaster that was going to hit. But we've brought in budgets with spending increases lower than inflation over the entire eight-year period. We've maintained a healthy fund balance, strong bond rating, and responsibly funded our obligations for pensions and OPEB. We discussed housing eight years ago. We didn't know that we were on the brink of a national housing crisis. Since then, we've created the Affordable Housing Commission, the Affordable Housing Trust, the Tax Ebatement Program. We've updated the senior housing, the senior tax program. And we participated in several affordable housing projects. We discussed climate change and environmental issues eight years ago. We're now Sustainable Connecticut certified. We've eliminated single-use plastic bags, reduced waste through the Pay-as-you-throw system, elevated some coastal roads, and are starting to focus on groundwater and septic issues in town. Most importantly, we could not have predicted a severely divided society and toxic climate of political extremism that exists today at the national level. But to this day, your Board of Selectmen has acted together with civility and respect to combine different ideas and viewpoints to make wise decisions for the town. We've done a lot. We have a lot to do. It's not perfect. I ask for your vote so that I can work together to ensure that this continues. Thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Federici?
Thank you. Once again, to the League for hosting the forum, members of the audience that are here for taking your time to come out, and those watching the video. I ask for your vote to continue to do my part to keep this a great community. I have, over the years, been fortunate to work with a number of amazing people in this town. And I think the continuity is a good thing and not a bad thing. Abrupt changes and fads of the moment sound good, may or may not address the problems that we need to address today, tomorrow, and into the future. When it comes to civic engagement, I've always tried to be guided by the three Cs: communication, collegiality, and collaboration. The old phrase, "Politics is local," is still meaningful to me. Quite literally, this morning, I've had two different people about two separate issues stop me and express their concerns about those and what we can do. I have passed them on in one case already, and I will do so again when I have that opportunity tomorrow. I believe that our citizens want to see that progress is being made and that the process of our community is transparent and open to all. I think Guilford's an incredible town. We're so fortunate to be in a town where people look out for each other. And I want to do everything that I can do to make that happen. And that's why I'm running for the Board of Selectmen. And I would ask you to vote for Row A. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's thank all the candidates for their participation. The League of Women Voters would like to remind you that you can find voting and candidate information on our online voter's guide, which is vote411.org. Also, there will be a recording of this forum on our YouTube channel, so look forward there. And tell your friends who say they didn't make it to look there. We also want to thank our voter service team, Dan Arman, who is videotaping for us, and Elise Low for organizing this event. Now it's your turn, as voters, to speak and participate in democracy. Be sure to vote. Early voting begins tomorrow, October 20th, and continues until November 2nd. And Election Day is November 4th, when all the polls will be opened from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Thank you. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of the East Shore, I welcome you to the Guilford Board of Finance Candidates Forum. My name is Carol Reimers. I'm a resident of Killingworth, and I will be the moderator for this forum. The League of Women Voters is a national, state, and local, nonpartisan political organization that welcomes all to join us. We are pleased to sponsor candidates' events like this one because we believe in empowering voters by providing voting and candidate information before each election day. So the candidates for Board of Finance are Rob Federici, Democrat, Amy Earls, Democrat, Peter Golitz, is a Republican candidate, unfortunately had a prior commitment and could not join us today, Tim Donlin is a Republican candidate, Elias Cavici, independent, and Jeffrey Beatty, independent. Each of the candidates will have a one-minute opening statement on their qualifications, followed by questions. Then they will have a minute to answer each question. And by drawing, just we just held, each candidate is seated in the order that they will be speaking first. So after the first question, we will do a rotation of speakers. So let's get started with the opening statement. And Mr. Federici?
Hello, everybody. First of all, thank you to the League for hosting this event today. My name is Rob Federici. I am a lifelong Guilford resident, very proud to live in Guilford, and returned here after earning my degree from the Rochester Institute of Technology. And I'm currently raising three kids here in town, and earned my MBA from UConn in 2020. Very passionate about the community and invested in the future of Guilford, being someone who's raising a young family here, actively involved in all the schools, you know, everything going on over there. If elected, I will be focused on protecting our public services and amazing schools. And I'm going to take a value-based approach to the Board of Finance. Everything goes on. It's important to protect the taxpayer, but also to offer a high value of services for your dollar. And in the interest of value, I yield the remainder of my time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Donlin?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for moderating this event, and the Guilford Lottery for hosting the event as well. My name is Tim Donlin. I've been a resident of Guilford for over 53 years, and graduated from Guilford High School in 1987. I have a degree in political science from Southern Connecticut State University, so I guess that's why I'm here. With a professional background in property and casualty insurance, I assume my career analyzing risks, resolving complex financial legal issues, and advancing for fair outcomes, or advocating for fair outcomes. These are the same skills I will bring to the Board, ensuring that our financial decisions are sound, equitable, and transparent. I run into Board of Finance to represent all citizens of Guilford, not just the well-connected or the well-heard, but especially those who felt overlooked or unheard by town government in recent years. Every voice matters. Every dollar spent should represent the needs of our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Beatty?
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting today's event. My name is Jeff Beatty, and I'm running for reelection to a fourth term on the Board of Finance. During my 12 years on the Board, I've worked with my colleagues and the members of the Board of Selectmen and Board of Education to create responsible budgets that provide essential services to Guilford citizens in an efficient, reasonable, and rational manner. I grew up in Guilford and have practiced law here in town since 1996. I believe in giving back to the community and have served on the boards of civic organizations that benefit our citizens, including the Guilford Arts Center, the Guilford Community Fund, the Chamber of Commerce, the Guilford Foundation, Guilford Youth Mentoring, the Guilford Board of Ethics, the Sarah Foundation, Guilford Little League, and the Guilford Free Library. My wife and I have raised our three children here, and have tried to give them an appreciation of the sense of community, cooperation, and willingness to serve that is unique to Guilford, and, in my opinion, is what distinguishes Guilford from other towns and states in our state and country. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Cavici?
Good afternoon. And thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. My name is Elias Cavici. I'm the newcomer to Guilford and politics. And I'm honored to be running as an independent candidate for the Guilford Board of Finance. I hold degrees in mechanical engineering, a master's in business administration, and I'm currently pursuing a doctorate in educational leadership. My career has taken me from executive roles at Procter &amp; Gamble, Bell South, and Samsung, to what I call now my retirement job, which is I'm teaching math at Amity Regional High School. I serve in the zoning Board of Appeals. That's how I came to be part of the Independent Party. And I'm running because I believe in responsible, community-centered budgeting, one that invests wisely in education, infrastructure, and public safety.
Thank you. Ms. Earls?
Thank you all for being here. My name is Amy Earls. I am finishing my first term on the Board of Finance due to reelection. Professionally, I work as the Vice President at Page Hardware, and I've been handling financials there for 30 years. I have an art degree and MBA, which aligns balance. I grew up here in town and am raising my three kids here with my husband Matt, and my parents are still in town as well. In the community, I've served on the Economic Development Commission, the Human Services Council, the Chamber of Commerce Board, Guilford Foundation Board. I organize the Guilford Dream Merchants Association, and currently am serving as the treasurer of the Guilford High Theater Arts Parents Group. I sing with the church choir and have some theater there. And in a few weeks, we'll be dancing for Raise the Roof Habitat fundraiser. There's nowhere else I'd rather live than Guilford. I love the arts, the history, the education, the nonprofits, and I hope to continue giving back on the Board of Finance if we're elected.
Thank you. Okay, we move on to our first question. Residents want to know that you will exercise fiscal restraint while preserving needed services for our growing population. How do you plan to balance these conflicting interests? Mr. Federici?
I think it's the job of the Board of Finance to not only work to understand those concerns that the residents have, but also to try to keep an eye on any potential issues, like unforeseen issues that might come down the road. For example, I know there was a big spike in the insurance liability that the town had to deal with. And, you know, responsible leadership that we have allowed the impact of that to be softened by maintaining a healthy rainy day fund. So it's that sort of thing of, yes, understanding what those concerns are from the residents of Guilford, who obviously, it's very understandable, there are concerns that they have these days, but also keeping, you know, out of the corner of your eye, a view on these other things that might come down the road to maintain that stability. I think that's an important thing, right? The sense of stability when you're leaving the town.
Thank you. Mr. Donlin?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it's a big part of being on the Board of Finance is to strike that balance. We've got conflicting priorities. Our people in town, you know, want services, and that's every one of us, really, to be honest with you. Basically, what I would look at doing is trying to just make sure that we have the keep it balanced from what the citizens want and what we can afford, because there are people in town who I've spoken to over the last several months that are struggling financially. Couple people told me that 10% of their gross income goes to property taxes. It's a lot. But they want to live here too, and they have services that they need. I myself, I have children in the Guilford schools, but my father was a public school teacher for 30 years, so I kind of know what goes into teaching, what goes into education. It's a very important part for this town. So the balance, public safety, education, infrastructure, and what the people can afford, that's really what the role of the Board of Finance is, and that's what I make of my priority.
Thank you. Mr. Beatty?
The balancing act is the biggest part of the Board of Finance. We have certain services that are essential to the town's citizens: schools, police, fire, maintaining the roads, public works, clearing snow in a snowstorm. And so we need to provide those services regardless of whether we want to or not. Striking that balance between providing those services and doing it in an efficient and affordable way is what the Board of Finance needs to do. And part of that is why we've come up with budgets over the last eight years that have been under the rate of inflation. We've tried to strike that balance and looked at the impact that the budgets are going to have by, and done it in a way that addresses the needs of the town, but also realizes that it's going to be an impact and it's going to affect everybody's pocketbook. So we've tried to do that. We've learned, I've learned personally by workshops, the services that get provided and how to cut costs and do it as efficiently as possible.
Thank you. Mr. Cabeche?
One of the things as a newcomer is you have to work together with the Board of Finance because what I'm hearing is they have done a good job, and the Board of Selectmen, in running this town and keeping the rate increases below the inflation. Look, when you own a house, you're going to have things that you must do to keep that house running. In our town is the school system, which is part and one of the best in the state, the police department, and I can tell you stories privately about where I come from, and the services, which have been very well maintained. Well, we need to keep that balance while making sure that the nice things to have, we look at them carefully.
Thank you. Ms. Earls?
Part of being on the Board of Finance that people don't know is that we don't have a lot of say in exactly how the money is spent, so we do a lot of trusting and questioning of the Board of Education and the Board of Selectmen. We do that every single meeting, and so I think that plays into our job in approving the ultimate budget is really understanding what that money is going towards and the thought process behind that. The other thing is to encourage investments, whether it's surpluses that we are putting back into fund balances that we can use, as Mr. Federici said, to smooth the curve later, or to invest, like if you buy one quality pair of shoes and it lasts you for 25 years versus you buying a pair every year, so doing things like that, that we can kind of invest wisely for the future of the town.
Thank you. Next question. Is there adequate transparency and accountability in our budget process? And Mr. Donlin, you're first.
I would have to say, and this is me going back following Board of Finance meetings since the late 80s, it was around 8, but I'm not saying you're old, you're experiencing it. But yeah, I've been following since, I think Alan Erickson was chairman at the time, and I think it's improved. Oh, I do. I think it's improved for a couple of reasons. One, people are more engaged. Sometimes it doesn't seem that way, but they are. People come to meetings, ask questions. I think with the intervention in your net, it helps. I remember I've seen a couple PowerPoint presentations from the Selectmen's Office and the Board of Education that explained the budget process and why the need for certain items. You may disagree, but the transparency is there. I think I will continue to do that if I'm on the Board of Finance, because that's very, very important. You've got to be transparent. You've got to explain. I consider myself, if I'm going to be on the Board of Finance, to continue to teach people about the budget process. Thank you.
Mr. Beatty?
I think there is adequate transparency and accountability in the budget process. The process, as many of you know, has already started. At the school districts, the leadership teams at the schools are meeting with the superintendent and the Board of Education to come up with their budgets for next year. We're about to start having workshops on the town side with the various departments to talk about not only their capital needs, but their operating budget for the upcoming year. Those meetings at the workshops are all, the Board of Finance attends, the Board of Selectmen attends. There's an opportunity to engage in questions with the department heads, and it's really very, it's a great learning experience for anybody who's interested to see how the decisions get made at these departments. Following that, the Board of Finance receives the budgets from the Board of Education and the Board of Selectmen at our meetings. They're public meetings. People are welcome to attend, and then we have workshops that are open to the public, and then we vote on them, and then there's a town meeting followed by the referendum. So there's a whole series of events over several months to adopt the budgets, a very, very, very transparent process.
Thank you. Mr. Beatty?
As a newcomer, I can tell you that I've seen it is very, I've seen transparency, and there is always room for improvement, and that transparency and improvement is going to bring additional trust from the community. But the thing I see is, I lived in a town called Western Florida for 22 years. I don't know what the budget there was. It was not that open as I've seen it here. My first year here, I went and voted on the budget, and I was able to see the line items that made the bulk of the budget, and, you know, I was allowed to understand more about what's going on in the town.
Thank you. Ms. Earls?
During my term this past year, the Board of Finance discovered an untransparent piece of the budget that was going on with the registered voters, and we immediately worked to make that more transparent. We didn't change the amounts of money that were flowing, but we, you know, immediately all of us recognized that need for transparency and openness. So as everybody else has said, there are public forums, the meetings are recorded, there's information in the newspaper. We are all at town events and open to talking to people. So yeah, I think there's a lot of transparency on the Board of Finance.
Mr. Federici?
Transparency and accountability for local government, I think, is also sort of tied into that civic engagement conversation that I think local governments are always sort of having. So it's always a challenge, but, you know, the ability to view these meetings online, you know, having the recording, not just on GCTV, like on cable the old days, but just going on YouTube, you're out for a walk, it's on your phone, like that kind of stuff. If you want that information, the ability to get that information, it's really never been easier. And in terms of accountability, you know, we're just one of the few towns where the residents vote on the budget every year, you know, something that's a rare sort of version of direct democracy on our budget. So in one sense, it's almost not possibly more accountable without the public voting on every single line item, you know, if we're doing it every year. So certainly be proud to be part of that.
Okay, thank you. Next question. Do you have any concerns regarding our bonded indebtedness? And we'll start with Mr. Beatty.
No, I don't. I think the town is in a great spot when it comes to having to bond for capital projects. We've taken the money that we've had in years we've had surpluses and established an designated fund balance, a rainy day funded, if you will. And because we've taken those steps and done it in a practical and responsible way, it's caused the town's bond rating to increase to a triple-A status. That's the highest rating that you can get. So what that means is that when we go out to bond for capital projects, we're paying a lower rate of interest than towns that don't have that triple-A rating. So that means that the taxpayers aren't paying as much for things like repairing the roofs at schools or buying new fire engines because we're able to bond at a lower rate. So I think we're in a very good position, and that's allowed us to do things like refinancing the high school debt, which saved taxpayers over $6 million in reduced interest payments over the repayment of the new school that was built a few years ago.
Thank you. Mr. Cabeche?
It's hard to come after Jeff with such a good knowledge of the running of the Board of Finance, but to be honest with you, I'm impressed by the triple-A rating that we have. That means low interest rates when we have the need to borrow for money or paying for money. Talking with Jeff a couple of days ago, he told me that when the high school bond was issued, it was later refinanced at a lower rate because of the triple-A rating. So I'm not concerned about that, you know, because it will allow us to be able to borrow money if we need in case of something that comes up, and unfortunately, we don't have a crystal ball to know what's coming.
Ms. Earls?
Yes, of course, I would love us to not have as much debt as we do, but I think the debt is there for wise investments, and our finance director has her finger so on the pulse of paying credits and where to put the money to get the best return on investment. So I think that we are managing our debt extremely well, and we're not, we're cognizant of things like the peak of the debt for the high school and not overtaxing unintended for capital investments while we still have that debt in place, and as that begins to ebb, we can invest in other things.
Mr. Federici?
As others have mentioned already, the bond rating situation in Guilford is already very strong, so certainly no concerns about having such a strong rating. If anything, you know, the burden of responsibility as a new member of the Board of Finance is that much more, and certainly honored to be able to potentially join the Board of Finance and be a steward of that rating into the future.
Mr. Donlin?
Thank you. I'm not concerned about the current indebtedness, but I'm concerned about going forward. We have a great bond rating, and basically to put it in, I guess, layman terms, it's kind of like the town's FICO score. Just because you have a high FICO score, a bond rate doesn't mean you shouldn't incur more debt. I'm old school, I guess I got it from my father, try to save as much as I can. I get it, there are certain things we can't, you know. You buy a house, unless you've got a lot of money, you can't pay cash for a house. Well, same thing with some of the items we have to fund. There's a potential next couple of years of $30 million just for the Pub Works Garage. So that's something I'm concerned about. Again, it's not the current debt level, it's the potential debt level coming up down the road. Keep in mind, that debt level adds to our debt service, which has to be paid every year. So I'm just cautious. I'm very happy we have a great bond rating. I think it's a tribute to the boards, the Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, Board of Education, they do a great job, but I'm just concerned, I think we just have to be careful, that's all.
Thank you. Next question. Do you think federal cuts will affect Guilford's budget? If so, how? Mr. Cabeche, you are first.
This time and age, federal cuts are affecting everybody, and I don't think Guilford is going to be different. But the important part of all this is that we make sure that we're managing the budget effectively, that we are planning conservatively in terms of making sure that the expenditures, you know, keep our services where we want it and our taxes as low as possible.
Ms. Earls? I agree that federal cuts are affecting everybody, and they will continue to. Guilford has done a great job of planning with both designated fund balances and undesignated funds to be able to prepare for things like COVID, which we weathered nobly, I think, and I think that we will continue to do a good job regardless of which of us are elected, but I think we'll continue to do a good job in planning going forward.
Mr. Federici?
Yeah, I'm extremely concerned about federal cuts, particularly with the special education program in Guilford. I think we have an incredible special aid program, and services like that, they really cut directly to who we are as a community to offer those services to people who need them. So the thought of those kind of programs having their funding dramatically release, yeah, it's extremely concerning.
Mr. Donlin?
Thank you. Yeah, I think there's potential some federal cuts could hurt our budget, but there's something that's more important, or that's just as important too, the federal budget cuts and potential state budget cuts, you know, what's going to happen, however, is unfunded mandates. Now, we always hear from the state, we have to do this, that, and this other, but they're not going to give us the money for it. That's just as important as the budget cuts. That is a budget cut for us, an unfunded mandate that the taxpayers of Guilford have to pay. My equivalent, I kind of make fun of it with the unfunded mandates. I look at and say with the budget from the state and the federal government that we're Lucy and Charlie Brown, if you will. Lucy's the state identity, Charlie Brown's the town. Guilford, and football is a nice pot of money that they promise us every year, and they put it out in front of us, and then they just pull it away from us, and we're on our own funding ourselves, and that really hurts the taxpayers of the town. So yes, it can be and will be an issue that we have to address.
Thank you. Mr. Beatty?
Thanks. Of course, it's a concern when there's a reduction in federal aid, but the good news is that Guilford typically does not rely very much on federal aid. So when the cuts happen, it's not going to have a dramatic impact on our budget. We do get some aid from the state, but we also don't get that much aid from the state that if there's a reduction in state aid, it's going to have a dramatic impact on the budget. So on the one hand, it's less of a concern, but that also speaks to why the way the town has been run so far is so important, because we've already established the practices that allow us to run our, to provide our services in an efficient and cost-effective manner while minimizing the impact on the taxpayers. So if we get a reduction, we know that we'll be able somehow, some way, make it through the budget or reorganize our priorities so that we're able to survive any cuts that may come our way.
Thank you. Our next and last question before closing statement. What is your opinion of Guilford's senior tax freeze program? Ms. Earls, you're first.
I think it's an important program. For those of you who are listening to the Board of Selectmen Forum, affordability is a huge, huge concern and is on a lot of people's minds, especially the seniors who invested in our town with their tax dollars for their whole time as young parents and families and now want to stay in the town. So I think it's really an important program, and I think that we are able to have that program while still maintaining enough of a tax base to fund all the services that those same seniors need.
Mr. Federici?
Definitely agree with Ms. Earls about how important that program is, but just to really double down on the housing aspect, which was discussed earlier, you know, I think these things sort of go in tandem. I'm excited to be a part of the process to work towards, you know, increasing the amount of affordable housing in the community. I think when you're a senior, yes, it's important to be able to have your tax freeze, but also the ability to maybe downsize to a less expensive home and how, you know, that can impact your budget annually in those circumstances. You know, all this stuff sort of goes together, so bringing that sort of holistic approach, I think will be very important.
Thank you. Mr. Donlin?
Yeah, I think the senior programs are important. I think we're the first one in the state to do it, if I remember correctly, and I'll speak from a personal standpoint. My father, he retired as a public school teacher 30 years ago, more than that, sorry, 35 years ago, and he left teaching. His top salary was $29,900, so he wasn't making a lot of money. His pension was a lot lower than that. So that was one of the reasons he was able to stay in Guilford, because we were able to freeze his taxes to some extent, until unfortunately I decided to play my own IRA and got him out of the program. He had to take an RMD one year. But I think it's really important, because when you keep seniors in this town, keeping the experience that they have, that they grew up with their kids in Guilford, and additionally, they're not, and this is not against young families, but not coming in with young kids that required, you know, world-class eyes, et cetera, et cetera. So I think it's very important, and it's something that we should continue to look at doing, maybe even expand it if possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Beatty?
Guilford was, if not the first, one of the first towns in the state to develop a program for elderly tax relief, and that was going back over 30 years ago when we adopted that program. We've made, at the Board of Finance, we review the number of applicants each year. We don't look at the specific applicants, that's the Board of Selectmen's job, but we review the number of people replying, and we determine whether or not there's any adjustments that need to be made to the program in order to make sure that there's funds available within the budget to absorb the tax cuts that are going to be result, that are going to be given to our senior citizens. We just revisited the overall program a little over a year ago, and some changes were made to make, to make... to make, to make, to continue the program and to keep it eligible for our senior citizens. It's a very valuable program because it allows our seniors to remain in town, in their homes, and then move on when it's, when they're ready to move on, not because they have to move on.
Thank you. Mr. Cabecce?
I agree with Jeff. It's about fairness. Yeah, I see Barb smiling because it, it's hard to come out after Jeff with, with his experience in the, in the, but it's about fairness. Come on, guys. We have senior citizens that have spent their life in Guilford and now because of taxes, they might be able to, or they, they might need to move out of their house, which they don't want to. The, the senior tax relief allows them to stay there, allows them to, you know, allows them to be part of a first system. That is what this is about.
Thank you. Okay, we will now move on to the closing statements. You'll have two minutes and feel free to address any issues you'd like in your last two minutes. So let's begin with Mr. Fredric.
Thank you and thank you again to the lead for hosting. Thank you, everybody, for attending. I hope I was able to bring forward today the theme of pride. That's what I wanted to bring to this event. Pride to be a party, uh, part of the, part of fiscal responsibility, maintaining that strong rainy day fund to soften any unforeseen hurdles that we might encounter. Think that's something to be proud of. Delivering quality services in our town. I mean, we've had to increase the entrance fees to some of our parks because they've been so popular this year. These are good problems to have, but I think I'm proud to be part of the town that offers those services. Proud to be a member of the community with such a high value school system. When you look at our costs per student relative to our test scores of other schools across the state, right, we're paying a lot less per state. I think that's something to be proud of. Proud of the sense of community. We have incredible events going on here at the Green all weekend. I think that's something that's really proud that we have in our town. And proud to have leadership that serves with compassion first and doing it all while keeping tax increases under the national average of inflation. Again, something I don't think all communities across our country are able to say that they were able to do, especially after COVID. So, uh, theme of pride and I hope to earn the votes of the residents in November. And, um, as one of our great leaders said a few hours ago, vote for me. Thank you.
Mr. Donlin?
Thank you. Um, and first I want to thank the Leebuven voters for having this event and Guilford Library for hosting it. Like I said, I've lived in Guilford 53 years. I haven't the opportunity to leave too, a couple of occasions for promotions or just transfer to other areas in the country for the companies I worked at, but I chose not to. And the reason I chose not to is I like Guilford. And this is, I grew up here. Like I said, my family moved here in 1972. Um, I played Little League, played youth hockey at Yale, not Guilford, but Yale. And, um, I enjoyed my time there and I like this town. Um, I like walking around, sometimes you see me walking around town after work, just, you know, stressed out job, relaxing, walking around. This is a wonderful town and there's wonderful people. You could disagree with people, but you could be cordial about it and that's what I think I think I am. Um, I have a, I'll be honest, I'm a fiscal conservative, that's not gonna change, but I will articulate it in a, in a positive way. I feel good, I work with people very well. Again, like I said, we may not, we may not agree, but I'll be respectful. Um, I've got a background, like I said, in property, casualty insurance. I know a lot of people in the education system in Guilford and in the area towns. I respect what they do. It's a tough job. I couldn't do that job. Um, I, you know, like, like with the kids that they have to deal with nowadays and everything like that, um, I think it's very important that we have a strong education system and that's something I will definitely advocate for. Board of Education does what they need to do. I was, I'd be on the Board of Finance looking at just maybe we can save some different, uh, save, uh, money by looking at different programs. But as I mentioned earlier, I lived in Guilford 53 years and there's a reason for that. Like I said, this town is truly a special place to live, to raise a family and enjoy the quality of life that our shoreline community offers. If elected Board of Finance, my goal is to ensure that Guilford continues to provide strong town services and excellent public services all across that sphere and sustain for every resident in Guilford, including those that have felt unheard in recent years. Uh, these residents will have the wisdom and our finances are managed as well. Thank you.
Mr. Beattie?
Thank, I'd like to thank the Leebuven voters for hosting this event and the library for, uh, putting us in this great space to have this forum. For the past 12 years, I've worked with my colleagues on the Board of Finance, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education to manage and oversee Guilford's financial health. During that time, we've worked collaboratively, collaboratively as Republicans, Democrats and Independents to come up with responsible budgets to provide essential services to our community. I've attended workshops where our town departments present their budgets and identify the changing needs of our community and have used that information to help address those needs while keeping in mind the impact on Guilford's taxpayers. For example, in fiscal, fiscal year 2021, the Guilford Fire Department responded to 3,552 calls, 1,630 of them were ambulance calls. In fiscal year 2022, the following year, the number of calls increased by nearly 1,000 to 4,427 calls, including 2,320 ambulance calls. As members of the Board of Finance, we have to work with the town departments and the other boards to address changing needs like that while continuing to keep in mind the impact on Guilford's taxpayers. We have also carefully managed our finances when the town has run surpluses to establish and maintain rainy day funds for unexpected expenses. This practice has led to the town receiving a triple A rating by bond agencies. As we said earlier, this means that when the town needs to borrow money for things like repairing an HVAC, HVAC system at a school, we pay less for the money than municipalities with a lower bond rating, saving money for Guilford's taxpayers. The current strong financial health of the town did not happen by accident. It's the result of the collaborative effort of town staff, department heads and the boards of Selectmen, Finance and Education. It is also the result of a belief among all of these parties that doing what is best for the town is more important than adhering to a political ideology or a litmus test. I look forward to continuing to serve the town and working with the members of the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance and the Board of Education, and I hope that you vote for me and Elias Cabecce on November 4th.
Thank you. Mr. Cabecce?
As I reflect why I chose to run, it really comes down to service and stewardship. I have been very fortunate and I believe it's my time to give back. Throughout my career, I've managed budgets, built teams and led projects that demanded a balance between efficiency and people-centered decision-making. Whether in a corporate boardroom or a high school classroom, I've learned that numbers only tell part of the story. Values tell the rest. Guilford is a town that values education, compassion, kindness and fiscal responsibility. Those are the same principles that should guide every budget decision we make. I'm not running to represent one group or interest. I'm running to represent the entire community. If elected, I will bring an analytical mindset, a teacher patience and a leader's integrity to every discussion. I will ask the tough questions, insist on clarity and work to build consensus. My goal is not only to protect Guilford's financial health, but also to ensure that we invest in our town's future responsibly, transparently and in collaboration. This election is not about politics, it's about people, purpose and progress. I would be honored, along with Jeff, to earn your trust and your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Earls?
I've always known that Guilford was a special place. People will discover the green and then they're buying a house and they stay here for the rest of their life. People I went to school with somehow managed to come back after college to raise their kids here. What I've discovered and appreciated as I've gotten older is that it takes a lot of work to, to maintain the character of, of a town like Guilford. It takes teamwork, it takes passion, it takes compassion. And four of us get to, in November, be working with the rest of the Board of Finance to, to help with that teamwork. I, I'm definitely one to easily get nostalgic about the businesses and the people that are no longer here and I'm really thankful for those people that came before that made Guilford what it is today, but I'm mostly excited about the future. I'm excited about the future for, for myself, my kids, my grandkids and, and those generations to come. I take seriously the responsibility that I've been entrusted with for the last four years in helping make that happen and I hope to continue. I'd like to, if I get reelected, to continue working for responsible growth with a, a healthy respect for Guilford's history. Thank you. Come out November 4th to vote.
Thank you very much. Let's thank all the candidates for their participation. We remind you that you can find voting and candidate information on the Leebuven Voters' Online Voters' Guide at post411.org. There will be a recording of this forum on the Leebuven Voters of the East Shore YouTube channel. We also want to thank our voter service team, Dan Arman and Elise Lowe for organizing the debates and the Guilford Free Library for providing this space. Now it is your turn as voters to speak and participate in our democracy. Be sure to vote. Early voting begins tomorrow, October 20th and continues through November 2nd. And of course, there's Election Day on November 4th when the polls will be open from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Please vote this year.